It's called an order.
Hi, Mark.
Roll call.
Nancy Kupka.
Present.
Please do that.
Yes.
Mike Davenport.
Yes, here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
Honorwood.
And Rick Kaufman.
Here.
Great, we have a call. Let's stand for pleasure.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, just for the record, can we note that Board Member Rick Pavanado is participating remotely? Okay, we need a motion for approval of the minutes for the November 19th, 2018 business meeting, the November 19th, 2018 closed meeting, the December 3rd special work meeting.
So moved.
Terry moves?
Second.
Mike seconds.
Trey Pavicic.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. This is the, we're going to move on to our first reception of visitors. The meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members who wish to address the board about any agenda item on which we're going to vote tonight. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board? Okay, hearing them, we're going to move on to recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Dr. Thiele.
All right, before we go to our regularly scheduled agenda items, I just wanted to address a topic that's been big on the community's mind for the last couple of weeks, which is protesters that have been showing up at both North and South High for the last two weeks. For about the last two weeks, between one and six protesters have been stationed outside both North or South High. Each time, as they've done in other schools in the area, these protesters have actively exercised their right to free speech while on public property. While some in the community may disagree with their message, tactics, or behavior, engaging with these protesters has been unproductive, and we are unable to force them to leave a public sidewalk. Our hope is that ignoring them may discourage them from returning, and this strategy has been communicated to our students, and they have been amazing at handling this sometimes difficult situation. We also appreciate the fact that families in the community have refrained from engaging, organizing, or participating in counter demonstrations outside of schools as well, as has been our request. Keeping our students safe is our top priority, and every morning, we've had administrators, many teachers and staff, security, our school resource officers, many, myself, and many district administrators, have all been present as students arrive. In addition, on every day, members of the Downers Grove Police Department have been present. We're in close, regular contact with them about the situation going on, and they've brought a strong police presence each day to ensure that students are protected at all times. We've also worked very closely with the Village of Downers Grove as they've provided additional resources, support, recommendations in working through the situation. We especially appreciate the outpouring of support from our community's staff and families. Yesterday night, both schools, community members came and left welcoming messages on the sidewalk for all of our students as they arrived for finals this week. And we continue to focus on creating a self-safe and welcoming start to school each day, regardless of what happens outside in the public space. So, I just wanted to address that to the board. I know the board has been, you know, kept informed, Ed and Janice have kept families informed, but the public doesn't always get those messages as they're directing the families, so I just thought we'd start off with that. So, any questions?
No, just, I personally sent a note to the mayor thanking him for, and asking him to communicate to staff, police. We really appreciate all that they've done and continue to do to help keep our students safe, and I know I'm not the only board member that's, you know, been concerned about this, and we've, you know, I'm a parent as well. So, really appreciate the way our staff has handled things, and I wish, wish there was more we could do, but I'm glad we're doing what we can, and really proud of our students so far in the way they've handled all this as well. So, thank you.
I would just echo what you said. I was going to say thank the staff, thank our officers, thank our principals, thank all of our administrative staff, and most of all, frankly, thank our students, and their parents, and the rest of the community for recognizing and allowing for free speech without consequence. Okay?
All right. Most of the agenda items tonight are returning from the last board meeting. This is just one more time to ask any follow-up questions. There's one new item that we'll get to, which Mark has the chat slide with. So, just starting out with 2019 summer school recommendations. Gina brought this to you at the last meeting. I've received no questions or follow-up since then from any board members, so Gina must have done following.
Always does.
I know.
Yep.
The recommendations are outlined in the board deck. Are there any questions for Gina myself? All right, moving on. Summer school calendar, much of the same thing, nothing has changed since you saw it the last time. Reflects the fact that summers, the offices are closed, as they've been in the last couple of years, or summer Friday, offices are closed. This will greatly help us with our construction work this summer. No changes since the last time. Take any questions on that one? Next one, 2019-2020 curriculum course proposals, as presented at last board meeting by our department chairs that were here, the departments that are affected by these changes. I've received no questions following the last board meeting, but last opportunity to ask any other follow-up questions before they're voted on tonight.
These are four meetings, aren't they?
Smooth.
I know.
All right, now for the item which we'll be asking you to take action on. This is the, the points each year that we come to you to talk about the levy extension. Mark's going to go through this for you, and then answer any questions that you have.
So it's about time we had an exciting agenda item. This is the graph, I think you've all seen several years, just updated for the current year levy. Key thing that, I break it into these groups just to maybe show you the reason we have to estimate our levy. What's known on the left there, what's known is over there. The only thing we know is what last year's assessed valuation ended for the calendar year ended 2017, and what the tax cap amount is on those, that part of the levy being 2.1%. That's all we know. And so the rest of it, we have, we'll make our request, it has to be made before the last Tuesday in December, is this, that's the center section, which we, we don't know, so we're taking some numbers, and we're actually putting some nice pads in there just so that we know that we can maintain our full levy amounts. So, the protection that we get under this is that we can have an EAB change all the way up to 8.56% with this levy, which is, I think, you know, it's very high, we won't see that. But it, the assessors that we met with, we met with, our assessors, I've either met or talked to them, they, some of them couldn't make it to our annual meeting, are saying that they're in 4% to 5% range for increases in assessed valuation for all of their areas this year. And add to that, some new construction, which would be on top of that, that's why we have about a 3% to 4% increase there. We're padding ourselves for up to 2.86%, but it could go a little bit higher overall for that, for the total increase in assessed valuation. And, you know, we could see a potential of $4.8 billion roughly in assessed valuation. And the $4.4 billion that we had in 2017, back at the first section over there, still is well below what we had peaked out at right before the crash in 2008, when everything started to die. We would, we just about touched $5 billion at that point, but we're getting close to it, and I think even with this one, we'll probably be in the, you know, 4.6 range, somewhere $4.6 billion, so we're getting closer to it. So, bottom line is, on the right side, what I expect to have happen is, I think that there will be a 5.7% EAB change. 1.2% of that will be new construction, that's very, would be very likely our trend for new construction, and talking to assessors as to what property they're actually bringing out to the rolls as new construction this year is, is giving us that impression. And I believe our tax rate will drop from $1.73 right now to $1.69. The reason that that happens is that the Consumer Price Index is lower than what the growth in the EAB basis, and whenever the EAB grows faster than what we can expand, we can only go up by that CPI cap of 2.1% on that, our rate drops, and it's a mathematical thing. I think, I tried to explain it in the cover memo, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go further into that. So, on the right-hand side, we're actually asking, let me start from the center-left here, the total request is for $80,290,000 of increase, which is 4.96%. But what we actually expect to have happen is that it will only go up to where we could, will be $79 million worth, and $20,000 worth of bonds. So we're going to have to reduce this request in the spring, when we actually know what our new construction is, and we actually know what our assessed value actually is, we'll probably reduce, probably in the educational fund, because that's where I put the excess, 1.27 million, and that'll reduce it by 1.58. So in this bottom right-hand corner is what I think is going to happen. One thing, we, we know that the increase to new properties will be, oh, actually, I have 3.3, no, 3-point total property, existing and new properties, 3.3. The portion that I think will be attributable to new property and new construction is 1.2%, and the actual impact to existing property owners will be 2.1% because that's what the tax cap is, and that's what we're limited to doing. And it's important that we do actually try and capture our new construction because our other revenue sources, particularly the state aid under the evidence-based model, is, is growing by less than 1/10 of 1% each year, so it's basically frozen. So, this is our only way that we can cover our expenditures outside of what we fund with state aid. The actual, and the annual impact to a $300,000 market value home is about $39 a year, which is an inflationary increase. Any questions?
No question, I just think it's worth highlighting the fact that it is an inflationary increase, so, you know, the value of a dollar at the beginning of the year is different than the value of the dollar at the end of the year, and that's what, that's what this is all about. And then, as well, this is my eighth time looking at this, and as is Nancy's, and more for Terry, and in every, every single time we've looked at it, the, the result is always close to what you expect it to be, not the amount that's, that we have, that we're putting in initially to guarantee that we're going to get that, you know, expected amount, and so that we, you know, so it truly is just matching whatever that inflationary number is, as it's capped, so.
It's always a little backwards that you have to submit what you're asking for before you know what you have.
Right.
Right.
I'm always a little sensitive to it, because what they write in the newspapers, oh, you know, we're asking, and the reality is, it always ends up being, at least in my experience, is always end up being less than what that, that initial ask is, and, and then it also, it's, it is truly just an inflationary increase, so.
And I will point out, as I do each year, that Mark and his team spend a whole lot of time trying to get as accurate and reflective numbers earlier as possible. Many school districts don't put in the work, and they just put in the levy, they'll just pick a huge number, throw it in there, and then let it all shake off later.
Great point.
But Mark and his team will do a nice job of showing the community where this money's actually coming from, and it ties together the questions, so.
And how interesting that it's, that still 10 years in from, after the recession, and we're, we're still not back to total assessed value of where we were back, I mean, that's...
Recognizing though that that value was inflated because of, you know, home values...
Understood.
And they had to, a couple of years ago, I did, if you recall, I gave us a graph that showed that our, where it was even after the crash, that the, the average increase had persisted over time, so that the part that fell was really some, was a balloon that shouldn't have been there, and that where it was, even though it dropped down in below $5 million, it, we had still been increasing at a, at a straight pattern of about, you know, 6% a year in our EAB. Now, it's shaking down now to maybe 5%, 5.5%, so we're kind of getting back to where we are historically. So over the next couple of years, it may, may just keep to grow, keep growing at 6%, which is what we should, we would expect.
Predictability is a good thing.
Yeah, well, we have a very solid base, a very solid community, and it's, you know, a lot of new construction going on right now. In a couple of years, we'll have some tiffs rolling off, you know, several years.
That's right.
Yes.
And that'll help as well.
Do you have a good feeling for, any kind of a feeling how much that, that's going to help? I mean, there's, what, 20 years, 17 years of growth there that we've been leveled off at, that now comes on?
But we are tracking it, and we, we go to the annual meetings with them. I can get you the values of, well, where they are now, but there's still several years to grow, and actually, this is where a lot of the construction's happening downtown, too. You see that? And on Ogden, Ogden tip is another big one, of course, it's really been changed, so I haven't seen any recent values on that yet.
Be curious to see when they, when you do get that information.
Yeah.
It should be good news for us.
Any other questions? Rick, did you have any questions?
No, none at all.
Okay, thank you.
We'll just check in with you every now and then to make sure you're there.
Mike's doing a good job.
Master Facility Plan, thanks.
All right, we've been real busy these last couple of weeks on the Master Facility Plan. A new item that we're bringing to the board's attention that we'll either need the okay to go on or vote on later, is we talked about the Master Facility Plan, one of the things that we went to the community with was secure vestibules for each of the two schools. However, not contained in there was secure vestibules for this building. Since then, it's been pointed out by our safety committee that that's kind of a glaring issue that's missing, especially with the staff that are in here on a daily basis, and we do have students here, testing and sometimes in the building. So, we've been working with the architects on some ideas for how we might do that here. The price range is falling somewhere about $120,000 to do the upgrades here to secure this building. We've already done some low-cost improvements like the solar proof, security screens on the door doors, and those kinds of things, but this one kind of falls in the middle. It does, you know, meet the vestibules that we talked about, but what I need to figure out, is this on the side of the G-Man, so we'd have to pay for this in savings through bidding? Is this something that the board would like us to bring in a future board meeting as an action item to vote on? Is this something we need to decide at this point of the Master Facility Plan process? No, we didn't, eventually, we'd have to tell the architects we're going to move forward, but we're going to wait until the bidding all comes back to make sure that, you know, we have...
To see how much it really is.
We have the space in there, and yeah, and how much it would cost, and those kinds of things.
Well, still, we have employees in the building, and we have students.
So I agree, the price tag's curious me a little bit. I'm wondering what we're, you know, what that, what that is, you know, what's, what's involved in it, so.
So structurally, it's, it's really changing this door that you see right over here to be more of a solid wall, adding a scanned-in vestibule on the other side of it. The problem with this building is you need two vestibules, because you have two entrances, one to the street, and one that has all of our disabled parking on this side, so you can't limit the two entrances. And then we need to secure that back space so that we can lock that down easier. To do that, we have several fire alarms we have to move, we have some lighting ventilation we have to move, so it's, there's a lot of moving pieces to make that go into place. So, you know, right now, it's just the high end of an estimate that you get from the architect. You know, we'll know more when we go to bid and to do those kinds of things, but wanted that to be on your radar, and I kind of know what the board's thoughts were about moving forward and how we should move forward with those things.
I don't have a great much of a choice, but at least...
I think it's important to keep our, our folks all safe, you know, whether it be students, or faculty, or, or staff. I mean, they all need to be safe, and I think keeping us informed as to what the cost is going to be, and, and what needs to be done in order to do that, I, I think that that's where we need to go.
Yes.
So, it sounds like we're okay with going forward with at least the bidding, getting the costs, I'll bring the cost back to the board, and we'll take an action item on actually doing the work with that actual cost.
Yes, yes.
And just to be clear, the transition house is, has this...
It always has, yeah, because it's a newer building, so it was constructed that way.
Yeah.
All right, other things that we've seen over the last couple of weeks, exteriors of the buildings, and we've provided feedback on that. We should have some good images of that after the start of the new year. North and South learning halls, we've spent the last two weeks on, and we've seen some real great progress on those spaces. South bleachers, this is a spot where we're really having to spend a lot of time on because the cell phone tower that is on one of the light poles out there is in the way of the new construction, so this is requiring a lot more work than we expected. It is also the area of construction that is closest to somebody's home at South High, right? Because it's across the street from home. So, we're having to spend a lot of time looking at that, making sure we get it right before we go to plan, get it through planning and zoning and everything else. So, a lot more time on that than we expected, but some complexities with that project. South life skills classrooms, one of the nice benefits of some of the movement that has happened as a result of this, is we always knew that we were going to have to refresh some classrooms as a result of these changes, just from the move to the Commons and everything else, but it's worked out at both schools that the classrooms that have been getting the most intense improvements are those where our students sit with the highest set of needs. So both North and South, multi-needs, life skills, those programs, those special education programs are getting a lot of needed attention as a side benefit of this. And then, we had our first library meetings over the last couple of weeks, because we know at North, there's some large improvements that happened to the libraries, just because of the moving pieces that fit in this, inside of that space, and at South, there's some major touches on the front end and light tent, which is deeper into the library itself. So, started having those meetings. On January 8th, we're pulling together the core team and all the administrators at both schools together to do kind of a mid-year planning review and update, just, and Mike will be at those meetings. And we're going to just kind of, everything that we planned through this point of the year, look at diagrams, make sure everybody has a chance to answer any questions. Then it'll take a couple of weeks to respond to those comments and feedback, and then at the end of January, we're planning at the January board meeting of doing a mid-year review with the whole board. So then you'll see a lot of these images, you'll see a lot of what we're talking about, and have that in place.
Will that include the phasing, the timeline of the, all the projects?
Yeah, we're real close on the phasing.
Okay.
Yep, so that'll have year one timeline, and then generally, what we expect to happen over the next few years, but definitely next summer through next winter will, will take place.
Okay.
So, any other questions on that?
Have you, do we have any kind of estimate about the disruption to, to the students during the timeline, during the build-out?
We know there will be some. It depends on the case and what you consider.
Thank you. I would agree.
Phase two will be much more of an impact when we start doing the Commons areas.
20 through 20, the summer of 2020 through the start of the 2021 school year will be the most disruptive.
Okay.
So, the summer of 2020 will be, almost every project is either finishing or starting up that summer. And then that whole next year is a lot, there's going to be a lot of hallways you walk down, and there'll be plywood up, there won't be drop ceilings, there'll be concrete floors, it will feel like you're in your house and your kitchen's being remodeled. For that school year especially. The other years, certain corners of the building, you'll feel it, but that 2020 to 2021 school year, everybody will feel that there is a large amount of construction going on. Now, we're working with architects and the builders that will minimize that impact on students and learning in our community, but you'll know it, you'll know that our buildings are really changing a lot of them.
Is the plan so to make sure the students are inside the building and no trailers?
Yep, no trailers, all, yeah, all of our instructional and our classrooms will be inside, so that might be a lot of moving parts, and people will have to pick up and move a lot, but no temporary outside structures.
Right, anything else?
Well, on the Master Facility...
Have we had any freedom of intervention requests?
Oh, yes, we have.
You have?
Since the last meeting, we asked for your spot.
Oh, then that's, thank you. Well, let's move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the personnel report, transfer of position classified, appointment classified, the personnel report, retirement certified, resignation certified, retirement classified, resignation classified, the financial pages, the 2018 through 23 superintendent goals, and the student tour.
So moved.
Second.
Mike, Terry.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Trey Pavicic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, the consent agenda carries. We'll move on now to the recommendations for action, approval of 2019 summer school recommendations.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Go ahead, is second.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mike?
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Trey Pavicic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, carries. Approval of the 2019 summer school and summer calendar?
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Terry, thank you.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Trey Pavicic.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of the 2019 through 20 curriculum proposals?
So moved.
Second.
Mike, Terry, thank you.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Trey Pavicic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries, and approval of the 2018 tax levy.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mike?
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavicic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. We're going to move on to the next reception of visitors. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are limited to three minutes, to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. If anybody needs more time, they should submit their thoughts in writing to Mrs. Nydic, the board secretary. Visitors addressing the board need to come to the microphone and state their full name. The proceedings are being tape-recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes. In addition, they'll be on, on the cable stations. I reserve, I, as the president, reserve the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant, and we really appreciate it if all the audience members would observe these protocols. Would anybody like to speak with the board? Please step to the microphone and state your name.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Leo James Athas. I'm an attorney representing an employee of yours, Mr. Teague. Mr. Teague has recently been undergoing a great deal of attention on social media in regard to a matter that the school district has pending concerning another employer. I'm here as a courtesy to the law firm that represents you, which is an excellent law firm. I've been working with Ms. Anderson, even though I don't know her on sight, and the reason I'm here is to tell the board that I will be taking any and all actions I deem appropriate to, in fact, stop what I consider to be a defamatory action per se against Mr. Teague. By way of experience, I have been general counsel to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education in Illinois. I represent over 240 school districts nationwide, and an equal amount of special education cooperatives, and I also happen to represent your neighbor Avery Coonley. I can tell you that, in my opinion, that Mr. Teague has exercised a great deal of restraint and understanding in this matter, and what I don't want to do in his directions of me have been very clear, because of the love and respect he apparently has for this district, is that he does not want to, for lack of a better term, put this district in the middle of anything. So that means that he has to suffer a few outrageous statements, he's prepared to do that, against my... that, against my advice. I traveled this country coast to coast and what I have found out about this school and your orchestra is that you are in a class by yourself. So you have nothing to apologize for, and I hope I won't, come January, when the final issue on the other matter, which gave birth to certain statements which indicate that Mr. Teague has somehow implicitly or impliedly has some responsibility for the acts of another employee in this district, is absolutely false. I can only indicate to you that things I have read indicate that the people who are launching this social media campaign out of what apparently has turned into a Pandora's box, has in fact, that they have in fact, defamed him. And in my opinion, he should be very, very aggressive in going after them. He indicated again, however, that he doesn't want to do that, but I should tell you that that's what we will be at least investigating and doing. The school staff that I've worked with, I wish my staff were as efficient. And I can also tell you that we'll do whatever we can to work with you folks to in fact not compromise any other actions on your part. I tell you this without knowing any of you, I have a brother who lives in this area, Denver, Denburn Woods, he lives in the Denburn Woods area and has for over 30 years, I guess. I would tell you that you have absolutely nothing to apologize for, nor does Mr. Teague. But if these assaults on him continue, that will leave us no, no possible room for maneuver. One of the great things about this country is even the dull and uninformed are allowed to speak, but they also have to have the responsibility that follows with it. I came here not to threaten anyone, believe me. My client was very clear and I had to keep him away from the meeting tonight because he wanted to make sure that I didn't go overboard. I'll be glad to stand for any questions you have. Again, this was a courtesy call because of the respect of Mr. Teague for his district and his employer. I understand he'll be leaving the country shortly to go to London on the orchestra. One of the people on the Human Rights Commission that I do some work for in Illinois, Ms. Yadger, had two children go through his orchestra and they were appalled when they saw some of the things on social media. I'll be glad to stand for any questions. Other than that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we will move on to communications and announcements. Mr. Renner, anything online?
We've not met since our last meeting.
Okay. The School Association for Special Education in DuPage County, SACID, we continue to meet to replace several key positions that are turning over this year, but everything's going along swimmingly and on, on time. District 99 Education Foundation?
Yes, just an update on Giving Tuesday, which was two weeks ago, I think it was. Through email and social media, we raised $1,200 for grants and, and that for students, so that was really good. And there is still an opportunity, you can still donate to the foundation at www.d99ef.org. And so, you know, we are pleased to take any donations that anyone has.
You can access that through the...
Through the website. Through the 99 website also. There's a link to that. We have the teacher learning grants, the next application deadline is February 1st. So if your teachers have anything, they can submit it then. And Pizza Wars, remember, put this on your calendars. It is February 28th, that's a Thursday, and it's at 5:30. And tickets will be going very quickly, so be sure and get those early on the website. And so far, we have planned 10 pizzerias, so there'll be plenty to eat. And if you would like to be a community member sponsor or business sponsor to the Pizza Wars, Maura Bates is, is at morabates@gmail.com. She will be happy to assist you in any of those sponsorships. And then we are always looking for volunteers to be on our board, so please contact Julia Beckman or, or myself even. And we would be happy to chat with you and join our organization because we do a lot of great things for our students. And, you know, this extra $1,200 will, will go right to them. It doesn't go to anything else. So it's, it's a very worthwhile cause. There's my, my...
Anything to report on the Royal Association School Board?
No report.
Okay. We have two upcoming board meetings, January 14th, 2019. We will have a special workshop meeting at 6:30 here. And on January 28th, we'll have our regular business meeting at 6:30, again, here at the Administrative Service Center. Are we moving to closed session?
Yes.
Yes. Now we need a motion for, I forgot, I'm sorry, for closed, to move into closed session for the appointment.
Dan's got you.
Dan, you got it?
I got you. I move a movement to closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Second.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Trey Pavisich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye. We are now in closed session. We will be moving to a closed room. We will not be returning to...
Yes, we will.
We'll be returning to adjourn, but we won't be taking...
No, we won't be returning to take action.
I'm sorry, we'll, we'll be returning to take action. So if you'd like to wait, you're certainly welcome to. Otherwise, we're in a closed. Have a good evening.